All right. The time is six thirty. With us this evening is Kim Van Beck, Mike Roth, Patrick Knight, Michael Gary, myself, Bill Lovis, Ben Peters, and Craig Schulte. With that, we have time for open forum. Is anyone here for open forum? Anyone sitting in the back of the room here for open forum? This isn't church. But everyone sat in the back of the room anyways. All right. Open forum.
We can put the comfy chairs in the front row.
Is complete. Consent agenda, and you had one addition to that.
A library hire. Consent agenda and an additional bill to get paid.
Oh, okay, and a bill to get paid. Would anyone like? Now, is that bill in here? Do we have to add it?
It's not on the list in the packet, but since you've got it, it's just included, we'll pay it.
And the library, that is the same librarian hire. It's not like we have two. Right.
There's just one.
Just the one. All right, would anyone like to amend the consent agenda for this one additional? Bill?
I would make that amendment.
Oh, I know which one this one is. Okay, yes. Thank you. Second?
Second, right.
All right, any further questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, all in favor for the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 All right, that's unanimous. Next up, Planning Commission Resolution twenty twenty-five thirteen dash thirteen variants. Michael?
Yeah. Well, this one was pretty straightforward to the commissioners. Wanting to have a storage container right there seemed to make sense to all commissioners. And it, I don't know, my mind was a little bit like, do we need to do this? But, but we did. And it's, I don't know, for me, it just seemed pretty straightforward. There was no complaints from North House, of course, and nothing from Angry Trout. So, seemed fair enough. Need a storage space for your stuff rather than having it sit outside. Doesn't seem like a bad idea.
And North, yeah, North Superior Fishery, they currently rent.
Right.
Do we know how long they will be renting? Was that any of the information they provided?
No, that was not provided. I've, in my mind, I just feel like, well, it's North House's deal. I mean, they're renting to them, so they're still the responsible party in this case. So if we were to say like, we want you to remove it, or whatever, it's really on them to, to do that.
Well, we can't say we want you to remove it.
Not if we gave them the variance.
Well, no, I know, but I'm just saying like, who is the responsible party in this case?
They may very well remove it if, if that relationship doesn't continue. But, I want to go back to what comment you made. You, you asked yourself, do we even need to do this? I just want to clarify, you mean, do we even need to ask for a permit to place a storage container on the ground? Is that the question you're asking? Do we need to do this?
Yeah, because it was the same question I had before, because I've, because my thinking, and I know what your response was to this group, you know, it doesn't, it's not actually attached to the ground, it's just a container.
Yeah.
And so to my mind, it was kind of like, all right. But as you said, sometimes temporary things become permanent.
Oftentimes temporary things last a long time. I mean, nothing's permanent, right?
Okay, okay.
So we call these permanent structures, but what we mean is, they're going to be there long enough that we hope they follow the rules, which in my mind is even, you know, a few months, but this is probably going to be there for years and years. And we've got examples of shipping container buildings where they attached to the ground. I mean, I suppose not. It wouldn't be that hard to show up with a trailer and a truck and take the shipping container away. But as long as it's being used as a structure, I mean, it's in place of a structure, I think it makes more sense for us to ask those to follow the structure rules. It's, there's some gray area here, and so it's more of a policy position than a really obvious, clear conclusion of what our ordinance says. But I think it's better to do, to just treat them as structures.
And, okay, so this came in more, more because of a discussion about structure. But the reason they're asking for this is because they're too close to the shoreline, then we would allow other structures.
Yes.
We have previously told North House they may not cross that line for structures. And that's really my more issue about this, and why I'm asking, is this temporary? And what's the expected time for this? Because I don't want a structure sitting there indefinitely, and I don't want to say something contrary to what we've already told North House in the past. Especially if somehow this was, who's, who's asking for this? North Shore Fishery or North House? I mean, I get it that they're the property owners, but, you know, so North Shore Fishery goes away and that just sits there?
I mean, I guess the, yeah, I mean, the renter did make the ask. I know that, I think Patrick reached out to North House and they were like, yeah, that's fine. That's as far as we got.
Yeah, I mean, it's clearly not North House that's carrying the water on this ask. It's their property, though, so it is their, officially their ask, because it has to be. But this isn't their issue. They're trying to give room to their tenant to take care of some needs. I mean, I think that they'd be fine with the idea of if that tenant's not there anymore, that the shipping container has to go, so.
Yeah, that seems like a fair requirement.
Is that something you can add to this variance?
I mean, I know we've said it for other things, but can we do that?
Well, I mean, I'm sure there's a way for us to do it. I'm not sure we want to freewheel tonight to do it. And I think rather, if that was something that you were interested in, let us come back at the next meeting with an idea of how best to do it.
Yeah, I don't want to see this sitting there permanently, and it doesn't seem like we're using consistent logic. We've already told them no. And then this is, this kind of gets into your part of about being a structure, well, whether, however it's attached or mobile or whatever. And then it sits there, I'm like, no, I mean, the whole, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you wanted to deal with that conflict, the, I think there are ways to write the findings that clearly differentiate this project from the one that was denied. But if that, if you don't want to differentiate, if you think, no, the, the shoreline setback is the shoreline setback, then, then there it is.
Yeah.
I mean, and that guess that's.
I think we can delineate, you know, how this is different from, from that. And I think also making the requirement to have it, you know, go with the user, I guess, or renter, makes sense.
And that's why I started the whole thing, asking like, how much longer do they anticipate being here? It's a lease. It's my understanding, it's, with their long-term goals, this is not a long-term viable situation for the fishermen, so.
Yeah.
That's really why I asked that first.
Yeah.
To, to know. So. Those are my thoughts. Anybody else?
Somebody you want to have a different conversation later on defining that? I mean, you want to have a different, something different written in the variance that defines what you're talking about? Okay.
That I would like to do.
The, the temporary nature of the permission. That's what you want to define? Yeah.
Yeah.
The limitations of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you know, this is our own problem ordinance-wise. We don't have an interim use permit, which might be a more appropriate way to deal with a situation like this. Where we can say, you have permission as long as these things are true, and once they're not, you don't, for this use. And, but we don't have that mechanism in our ordinance, so we'll have to figure out a different way to do it.
Well, there's another, there's another thought about ordinance interim. Write that down.
Intermuse.
Yeah.
So we can put a pause on this and work on that? All right, do we need to, to make some declarative on that?
I mean, I think it might be useful for you all to indicate that we're moving towards approval. Even if you're not voting on it tonight, if we can figure that out, that's what we're trying to do. That maybe would be helpful to the applicants to just know that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that is the idea, is to make sure that it's, that it is a temporary structure.
Okay.
Yes. All right.
Well, for those of you that were at the planning commission meeting last week, you might notice a missing item on the agenda.
Yeah.
Want to comment about that, Michael?
Yeah, I did, I, yeah, it was too bad. I did reach out to them just to see what they had to say, and there was no response, at least not to me.
So we received a, an email from the applicants asking for their item to be withdrawn.
Oh, okay, I was wondering why. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, they're not, they're not moving forward with the purchase. That's all they told us.
Oh, all right. I didn't, I thought it was already purchased. Okay.
I don't, I don't have any more details than that.
Yeah.
All right. So with that, we're on to our HRA report. Is this right? Okay. So joining us is HR Director Jeff Brand. He and Mike have meetings, but I had a meeting with him, I don't know, two weeks ago, at least. Just phone catch-up, ask him what he knew about some of our projects. And I know, I mentioned to him that I know he's been busy going around communicating in lots of really good ways about all the work the HRA has been doing for planning for their future. And I asked if he would come here and give us an update as well about the HRA and some of the projects currently in front of the council that he's working with, so we could be up to speed and ask questions and learn from him as well. Thank you for coming this evening and in person.
That's right. And then I emailed the slide deck. Is that?
Yeah.
Bill, right there. I'm just telling you next slide then, when we, when we switch. Okay, sounds good. All right. Give you, by the way, business cards in case you want to reach out to me afterwards by phone, text, email, it all works. Yeah, I just want to talk a little bit about the Cook County HRA, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Next slide. Oh, perfect, live too. So the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, yeah, we can hit the next one. Is comprised of a board of directors. You know, I've got my President Bill Giger, my Vice President Chris O'Brien, Richard Olson, Nick Lamore, he's a newer member, and then also Bill Hanson, plus two county commissioners who are also participating at a non-voting level. Our Commissioners Gamble and Commissioner Sullivan. Who is the HRA? Well, that's me. It's a one-man show. They tell me what to do all the time, and I do it. And I go out and we work together on some different projects. But really, the real question is, hit the next slide, what does the HRA do? Uh, next slide after that. I like that kid. He looks really confused. I appreciate that sometimes. Um, oh, back one. Oh, there we go. So we support housing needs in Cook County. So we're not just focused on Grand Marais, or, you know, one aspect of the West End or the East End or anything like that. We're looking at all the different areas of Cook County. We primarily seek out and also vet developers for new local projects. You might have heard in, in recent news that we kind of took a different tack when it comes to vetting local projects going forward. We want to make sure that we gather good diligence and good information about the people that we want to work with on projects. And so we have created some new forms in order for them to sign, and then we've got some investigations that we do for criminal background, background checks and that sort of thing. And it's, it's very similar to what other communities and other counties are doing across Minnesota. And so we're, we're getting into that, that situation because we have to. We want to know what's going on, and unfortunately, in the past, we didn't have all the answers about, about a particular situation that we really could have known more about, so. And there was some time to a transition between my predecessors and myself, too. We apply for public funding as needed to focus on things like rehabilitation, new development, and then the big one is redevelopment. And so there'll be conversations, and there'll be money, and there'll be opportunities to work together on these different aspects of, of creating more housing in Cook County. And, you know, I think that's really unique is that Cook County is in an opportunity zone. At the federal level, they've kind of re-adopted opportunity zones and are leaving up to the governor to decide where these opportunity zones need to be in the future. When you look at Opportunity Zones one point oh, Grand Marais isn't actually included. But when you look at access to utilities, well, Grand Marais is the only place in the county where there's utilities. And so that seems a little illogical to me. And so in iteration two point oh, I plan to make the argument that Grand Marais should be included in those opportunity zones, uh, discussions. And that has implications for both economic development, but also for housing as well. Uh, next year, or this year, we're finalizing the establishment of a local housing trust fund. It's something we really didn't do in the past because we really didn't have to. The money was flowing through ARPA dollars, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars at the federal level, to the county for things like Gunflint View, or the Heights, or Norris Goggin. And so we, we had access to funding, and we were able to do the easy, low-hanging pieces of fruit, so to speak, in funding these opportunities. But as things tighten up a lot at the federal level and at the state levels respectively, it becomes more of a, an opportunity for us to look locally and to work with some potential unlock, some opportunity to work with philanthropic organizations that are looking at things like housing, workforce housing. We definitely have some challenges in Cook County for housing, and we think that would reflect favorably for some of those other organizations to participate and help us to build the housing in the future. We also do some legislative advocacy. I serve with both members that we have now at the legislature, both Roger Skaba and Grant Haushchild. And I've got good relationships with them. We want to work towards a, a place where we can build more housing in a community that's, of course, affordable, that's easy to access and that sort of thing, and that's going to take some help from the legislature, too, no doubt. And also things like the capital investment request that you guys have for the city of Grand Marais as well. That's really important. You can't build more housing if you don't have that infrastructure. And so we want to support that. At the county level, we want to continue to support local roads, because of course we need roads, too. That's really important. And, you know, unique to us, I, I think we have a wealth of opportunities in growing and developing partnerships. But there's just a lot of people around here that are in the know, that have their particular issue or category that they really work hard on, and they're willing to partner in a lot of different ways. And one of those cross avenues is housing. One of those intersections is housing when it comes to veteran homelessness, which we're starting to hear a little bit of in Cook County for the first time. Uh, and so working with Karen Christensen to figure out, how do we solve that problem that we didn't have a few years ago even? And then also things like, you know, assisted living, or some opportunity for some elder housing and that sort of thing in a community in our county, and working with partners that are kind of have looked at that, or have figured it out, or have constituencies that they can ask information about what their needs are now and in the future. So it's really a wonderful opportunity for us to work with folks in our, in our county. Next slide. So our mission is pretty simple at the HRA. You know, we want to catalyze and advocate for the creation of safe, stable, and attainable housing opportunities for current and future residents. And so we want to make sure that those, those folks have access to it. You know, I, I mentioned this at the groundbreaking ceremony at the Heights back in, in June, but that the safe and attainable is really important, because it's really vital for the wealth, but also the health of our community. And safe and stable means a lot of different things to a lot of different people, and so does attainable. Attainable could be, depending on what your wealth and income is, attainable could mean a lot of different price ranges, for that matter. Next slide is our vision for Cook County. Our vision is to create an inclusive community with attainable housing, where residents and families can grow and flourish for generations to come. Recently, we had an opportunity at some strategic planning in the fall, actually in this room, no less, to kind of reevaluate our mission and vision and our values, which is coming up in the next slide. And they still hold true for what our, our goals are and what our mission is for the HRA. So we have made, made no significant changes since we started in twenty twenty-two. Uh, next slide is our values. There are three big ones: action, integrity, and inclusion. We want to make sure that we're making data-driven decisions that are evidence-based, because those will provide the longest-term results for the benefit of the community. Integrity is really important. We want to make sure that we have public trust, that we are reaching out to the public to understand what their needs are, but also be transparent all throughout the process, so people can understand where we got from here to there. Uh, I remember my math teacher saying, show your work, show your work. Well, this is a way for us to show our work. And inclusion, it's really important that we are providing opportunity for everyone to have access, again, to that safe and stable attainable housing. So, the next slide here will show our updated strategic plan. Before twenty twenty-five, the top three were the three we really focused on. So it was about building new, it was about rehabbing existing, and looking at opportunities to expand and redevelop across the county. Those are still the three primary focuses. But in, in July, we also created five new strategic planning points with key performance indicators that will help us pinpoint when we actually hit the target. And so I didn't include those today, but one of them is creating that local housing trust fund, so that we have money for things like rent stabilization, which is really important, or to help with pre-development costs, so we can help folks look at, maybe creating ADU on, on their property. Or this, uh, the next slide is the Residential Open Space Overlay District, to help them figure out, they've got forty acres out in the country, and maybe they want to create new opportunities for some new neighbors or some income by renting. And so by creating some of these shared spaces with higher density opportunities, you know, the, the ROSO, we call it, the Residential Open Space Overlay District, is an overlay on top of existing zoning. And without getting too into the weeds on that, would allow for things like greater density, two times the density, for opportunities to share wells, to share septics, to lower the costs of production of housing, but also to cut into a little bit of that red tape in the preliminary planning and things of that nature for development. And the last two are really important as we start looking at the future of housing. Number one is to increase the efficiency and lower the operational costs on the backend of the housing that we build. And the, the last one is really important to us, it's developing a comprehensive housing plan for all of Cook County. And I'll get to that in a minute. So, in the next slide, oh, back a slide. You might, this is on the, on the website you guys have, on the city's website. So in twenty nineteen, there was a draft of the Grand Marais Housing Plan. And it kind of pinpointed a little bit of different shades of color where the multifamily is and where the single residential housing is and that sort of thing. And I encourage you to continue to look at housing plans, and we want to be a member of that discussion at the HRA as well. You know, I think it's really important for us to look at the housing. So that way, when a developer comes to us and says, I want to build twelve units in Grand Marais, where can I get access to sewer and water and electric? That we can actually pull up a map, and we can have that look, and we can pinpoint those different opportunities. Or if they're looking at, for instance, in Taftie, Lutzen, or, you know, some of these other locations where there's some semblance of shared septic and sewer, we can start pinpointing where those locations are. We do own some property across the entire county. Uh, we have about a thirty-acre parcel just right behind the Birch Grove School. That's targeting some more housing in that area. Previously, it was known as the Temperance Trails Housing Plan. We're going to go back to the drawing board on that. We're going to have a request for proposals, perhaps. We're going to look at some different opportunities, really take our time, be deliberative about that. Look at that as a phase one, because there's another eighty acres that are right next to it, they're tax forfeit, that we'd really love to see get back in the tax rolls, uh, to provide more opportunities for people as well for housing. And so a phase one and perhaps a phase two for that location. But in that vein of thinking, too, it's just an opportunity for us to take a look at across the entire spectrum of our area, where could we put senior housing someday, or where could we put different types of housing in the community? Uh, next slide. This is information I collected from Mike back in Ju- June, July, somewhere there, in, in, was one of the information points that the commissioners wanted to know going into strategic planning. What do the housing permits look like in both Grand Marais and across the entire county? And so this is a seven-year look of new homes, multi-homes. There was one relocate. You might remember the, the building that was next door to North House Folk School that was moved up the hill. And then solar applications are going up. That's a good thing. We want to support that as well, uh, at the HRA as, as a means of lowering that cost of, of housing. Um, as you look at Cook County for about the same period of time, homes, and separated are homes with decks. Perhaps there's an extra permit involved. That's why that's separated out. We don't know specifically, just by looking at these permits, if these were completed, or if they were just pulled, but never completed. But we know what types of homes they were looking for. They were looking for single family. They were looking for vacation rentals. They were looking for second homes. In that mix, fourteen yurt permits were also created. That's a unique data set for our county. There aren't a lot of counties that will say that there's double-digit amount of yurts located within the county's boundaries. And then also guest cabins, to me, that doesn't say that they're permanent housing structures, but more come-and-go guest cabin type housing. The, the next slide here shows a little bit more about the county overall. There's about fourteen thousand eight hundred parcels in the county. The number of seasonal recreational homes, twenty-five hundred and sixty-one. There are four duplexes and triplexes, and the total is twenty-six hundred and thirty-six units roughly of single-family housing. If you look at the, the short-term housing in the county, there's six hundred and sixty-eight if you include the resort community. If you don't, it's three hundred and fifty licensed single-family homes that are short-term dwellings. Uh, parcels with four units or more, so we're talking about apartment complexes and that sort of thing, there's nineteen across the entire county. And the number that I think is really interesting to me is the rental versus owner occupied. Of course, they're all owned by someone, but somebody will rent forty percent of the, of the spaces in Cook County versus owner occupied represents fifty-four. And if you look over the, the single-family permits issued in twenty eighteen, this is county and city altogether, because your system collects different information than the county does. I added everything together. It's about fifty-one permits pulled per year. If, if you may have heard something about a housing needs analysis that was done in Cook County over the years. In twenty twenty-two, we did that at the HRA, and we looked at data points now, but also into the future, to, to the year twenty twenty-seven. We talked to business owners, we talked to real estate professionals, we interviewed housing advocates across the spectrum of Cook County. And we kind of created a, a, a plan of action, so to speak, for housing in the area. Uh, the next slide shows the, the rental units portion of the housing needs analysis. I have the whole document here with me. It's been ear-tagged and earmarked, and I've written a couple of notes here and there and everywhere since I started in February. But I, I think the real big thing I want to point out is that if you're looking at market rate housing, fifty to sixty units, I would say that between the Gunflint View and the, um, the Heights Project, the first iteration of the Heights Project, we've generally hit the mark on those market rate units. If you look at the sixty to eighty percent AMI, that's a subsidy at some level of either forty percent or twenty percent coming from the HRA through a variety of means. Sometimes it's been through ARPA dollars, other times it's been through, at the legislature in twenty twenty-three, we created what's called stabilization in housing grants. Uh, it's kind of like LGA in a way, or county program aid, or school aid. We created a new category for rent stabilization for the county. The county decides how that money goes into implementation. Uh, so Brady Powers and I now are working together on next year's forty-three thousand. Um, the, uh, so Brady Powers and I now are working together on next year's forty-three thousand and where that will go. Right now, we've got commitments with the Heights and with Gunflint View, so that's where that money will go. Um, and so, that's where that sixteen, eighty percent AMI, uh, is. But if you look at the number I highlighted in yellow, that hundred and forty units, it's really hard to see up there. Sorry about that. The top, uh, number, the up to fifty percent AMI, that's half of market rate. That's a big and scary number to us, because that's not really sustainable unless you have sustainable means of funding these projects, or on the front end, you've created a project that's been really subsidized to build a project that is essentially half the cost of building. Um, and so, and then of course you've got the operating costs in the backend, electricity and sewer and water, all those things. Maintenance and upkeep and staffing the place and, and all that. But, um, we really haven't even begun to hit, uh, the fifty percent AMI. So the area, area median income for Cook County is roughly ninety thousand for a family of four. And so, you know, we're talking about rents, we're talking about rents that are under seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. So that's something we still need to work on. And if you hit the next slide. Kind of wanted to point a little bit of information, uh, gathering that I did for Gunflint View Apartments. That's fifty-one units, phase one. Uh, there's potential for a phase two as well. Uh, we have that property now and are, are willing to work with our, our clients that P and R properties that they wanna expand, but they, they, um, invested a total of, uh, eleven million dollars. Of that, there was a one-point-two million dollar public financial support investment. And four hundred thousand of that total went to local purchasing within thirty miles of Grand Murray. So they bought items that ended up in the apartment, or it was food for the workers, or it was gas for the workers, or whatever the case might be lodging to. Uh, the next slide shows the Heights. Uh, it's very similar in the numbers, um, nine-point-one million dollars in total investments. Um, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand in public financial support. We received a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar IRR grant at the, uh, end of last year that wo- that helped, uh, finance the the building of the structures. You might remember, it's been a couple of months, but those things pretty much were shipped in by these modules, one by one to the airport, uh, the old airport. And then from there shipped to the site in about two and a half days. They mega-constructed these, these Lego blocks together into housing. And, um, I believe next month, they're already talking about opening it up to the public, um, and having people move in. Of that, again, Gary Lats gave me the number of about two hundred and thirty thousand in local purchasing for the area for the Heights.
Just really quick, so going back, your other one's fifty-one units for eleven million. When you got also public financing, so still that's still twelve million. So that's fifty-one, right? And then the other one is thirty-six. I guess maybe percentage-wise, it's about for nine point, well, it's ten million. I mean. That, this one.
We were just thinking per unit, like.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's really hard to compare these just because of the construction of them. Some are built off-site and shipped here. Which means they are able to build at a larger scale quicker, and, uh, they're able to then move on to the next project and not have to re-mobilize. Um, they just had to mobilize the final, finished project to site, really. Um, and so it's a little, it's a little apples and oranges, but yeah, yep, I, I do see the numbers, the total. But, you know, I think at the end of the day, there's eighty-seven units that'll be online by the end of this year. Um, and the investments were made. I, I really think that they've really hit a need in the community. I remember when I was first hired for the position in February, um, and sitting in Allison Plummer's office at the HR Department at Cook County. She had a whiteboard with about ten different names of, uh, people who had been hired but could not find housing. And that was in February of, before the Heights, uh, before Gunflint View had even come online. And, uh, they were accepting applications sh- shortly right after that point. And, um, you, you look now and that, um, the opportunity for people that live there now. I, I've seen State Patrol Squad cars there, I've seen Sheriff's Deputy cars there. Um, I got a, a very good letter from our school superintendent, uh, Chris Lindholm. He, he said, "Just a note here, a sincere thank you. For the first time in over five years, every single teaching position in Cook County schools has been filled with qualified candidates, and every single new hire has found housing." "It feels like an incredible miracle, but it is not. It is due in large part to the diligent work over the past three years to get housing for Cook County." And that was in, in, uh, Jul- June twenty-seventh on a Friday. And so, before really school started, uh, they were able to say that. And so that was with Gunflint View Online. So teachers found some housing and were able to fit into our community. Um, if you go to the next slide. Single-family homes, also a target of ours. We wanna make sure that people are also, um, being able to find housing at every level. Um, our market rate housing, so it's, it's a unique situation. We've got a lot of, uh, if you look at the demographics for our community, it's kind of what they call an inverted pyramid. There is a larger population demographic at the top, and those are folks that represent the sixty-five and older category in our community. And kind of at the bottom of the pyramid are the infants to eighteen-year-olds. And really the entrance into our workforce all the way to about thirty years old, so young families. Those numbers represent the lowest numbers in Cook County per, for population. And but however, um, if we wanna hire people to become our new teachers and, and to work in our our sheriff's department and things of that nature, our hospital too, we're gonna need to find opportunities for these young families to move to Grand Murray. And the affordability, it's kind of a math problem we have right now in Cook County. Um, the income of ninety thousand doesn't really correlate to being able to afford a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. And so, at some level, there has to be some sort of supportive funding to kind of make those two numbers work together. To solve for X or to solve for Y, there has to be some extra involved. In our housing study, we pinpointed that we need about two hundred homes that are a little higher than three hundred and twenty-five thousand. And, uh, we need some of that housing to be about twenty or thirty houses, to be between a hundred and seventy-five thousand to three hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's something that we continue to work towards a goal of. Um, we haven't really kind of hit the mark very often. However, the next slide, we do have some hope. With the Norris Scogan Project that allows us to have twelve new single-family homes to be built here in Grand Murray. Um, they just received a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant this fall. They're working on the site now, so, um, if you go over there, their KTM's working on site removal of of brush and shrubs and things like that, and getting ready for houses to be put up there eventually. And so, there's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar IRR grant. We had a hundred thousand dollars set aside through the American Rescue Plan Act, um, for a match through, for that project. And so, a total of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the project itself, not including that home construction part, we're looking at nine hundred and three thousand dollars so far. Now, once the road's being built and constructed, then next spring, they're looking at building the homes. And so eventually, what we're gonna have is twelve single-family dwellings, um, that are coming online and being sold for sale. And they're still committed to a price structure that is kind of with that previous slide. Run that three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar range that we really need to start targeting. Uh, the next slide is, uh, the last bit of housing that I wanted to mention is the senior housing part of it. Uh, right now, we export our sixty-five and elders out of the community, um, to other places where they have assisted living. You know, and sometimes, to be fair, they're moving to their grandchildren, they're moving to where their kids live now. And that's fine, and that's great, um. But I've also heard from people since I started at the HRA, and we've talked about senior housing on WTIP and in the newspaper and other places, about how people are willing to move back to Grand Murray if they have that opportunity to do so with senior living. And so, I'm looking at the numbers for assisted living, just through our study, um. And it shows, an assisted living that could source about, you know, you add up all those numbers, between eighty and a hundred and fifteen um, individuals, eighteen, eh, a hundred units. And so, eighty to a hundred and fifteen, that includes things that we don't have now, like, um, assisted living. Um, it does require some supported senior housing. The number there is about ten to fifteen. Then of course, you know, it's really hard to just get discount elder care. It's all basically at the market rate, at that one rate. And so that's where our focus has to be with, uh, regards to the market rate housing for seniors and to folks. And what that will do, I believe, is also shake off some additional opportunities for these homes to become available for sale for the next family to move into in our community, and allow them to go to a place where it's, you know, uh, more functional for them. With the, uh, you know, the laundry and all that on one floor, and, and maybe have some assisted, assisted care located close by or nearby, or even in the, in the building. And so that, um, that's the senior. So, s- to summarize in the next slide here. We, um, we have about a hundred and forty-three to a hundred and eighty, uh, three rental units that we still need to provide across the entire county. Um, and that ranges from permanent to supportive, uh, permanently supportive rather, to market rate, permanently supportive being at fifty percent specifically. Um, and that's gonna take some work, and that's gonna take some real investments and, and opportunities to build some of that housing. We also need two hundred and ten to two hundred and thirty more single-family homes in our, in our county. Um, eight, eighty to a hundred and fifteen senior housing units. And according to our study, we were supposed to build all of that stuff by twenty-twenty-seven, which realistically isn't gonna happen in the next year and a half. But if we were going to do that, and this is with that easy money flowing, so to speak, from the federal government down, a hundred and seventy-five units per year, we haven't gotten there. And so we still have a lot of work to do, and we still, um, we still have the ability to roll with the punches. If things change in our community, and the needs change in our community, we're able to be nimble enough to focus on that type of housing over another type of housing. And then, uh, the second to last slide here is just simply, where do we build? You know, you look at Cook County, we're a unique county just because of the percentage of public lands where we can't build. I can't build a, a complex in the Boundary Waters, and I can't in the Superior National Forest. And I can't really do a lot of that stuff where there's, you know, that ninety-two percent or so land. But we've got some land that's private and available. It needs to have access to services and amenities. Realistically, people are moving where there's healthcare. Thank goodness, we have, uh, that here in our community. We have good schools, and we have choices to choose from in our community as well. Commerce, we've got a lot of commerce across the county. We've got access to EMS and fire and infrastructure. Roads, sewer, water, that's the easiest, uh, thing to build into and hook up into. And, and, um, you know, you look at that map there. Um, we've got the green and yellow are all public, the white is privately owned, and then we've got the, our neighbors to the east there with the Grand Portage Reservation as well. Which is a sovereign nation. Um, I want to be able to be available, uh, to help and, and to work with them on a lot of different issues, including our senior housing needs. And so, as in the HRA, we wanna continue to work with all of our partners across the county. And with that, the last slide. Any questions?
Um, for that housing trust fund, I know there was, when it first kind of hit a hot topic with the state, there was some seed money. Is that, is, it's all gone?
Um, no, uh, it's not all gone, and I kind of, I kind of know a thing or two about that, being that when I was in the legislature, I carried the bill on the House side. And it was Liz Bolton in the Senate that carried the bill, and there's still money out there and available through the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. And so, you know, we've collected one percent of, um, the vacation rental, um, collections from the Cascade Vacation Rentals, and they've given it to us. We've basically just set it aside and haven't spent the money yet. That's gonna be the impetus for us to start with the match, is we're gonna bring that money over to the local housing trust fund. As that seed money, get the match from the Fed, uh, from the state, and then start working nationally and with some of these film fabric organizations as well. And to see where we can go with that, to leverage our dollars to help start working on that seed money.
What, are you guys, um, how are you guys lo- I mean, you kind of referenced it, I'm just curious, how are you guys gonna lobby as a group? Like, the city's working with the chamber, are you just gonna work on your own, or just curious how you'll do that? I mean, you have personally, obviously, a lot of experience, so maybe.
Yeah, well, um, to answer that question, I do wanna rely on working partnerships that we have in the county to support, you know, the strength of numbers, right? Uh, we also belong to an organization called the Minnesota Chapter of the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Organizations. And so, where there's niche policy that needs to be advocated for, that's gonna be with that organization. And then lastly, we just joined in with the, um, the, uh, Greater Minnesota Partnership as well. And so there's an opportunity for us to have a voice at the legislature, to work on things like opportunity zones, to work on tax policy that might help us develop more housing opportunities and that sort of thing. Try to partner with as many people as possible, including the city and the chamber.
Um, can you give us some updates on some of the key? I know you've had communications with some of the key projects that are affecting the city, like DeVal's project, and our, that's potential on the top of the hill. Um, we have some others as well anyways.
Yeah, well, we'll start with DeVal since you brought that one up first. Um, I talked with Alex DeVal this afternoon, actually. And, um, he really didn't have anything new for me in terms of, you know, he doesn't have any new asks for the city or anything like that. He's still working off of the agreement that you guys have in place now. Uh, he still wants to build sixteen units of affordable housing. Oh, at workforce housing at the, um, at that location where the old hotel used to be a motel. Um, he is closing the gap on some funding that he needs in order for the project to go forward. Um, he's looking for some investors and some opportunity to build more of a, um, um, a community-focused and supported housing project there. And so, um, one of the things he mentioned to me was an interest in having a community conversation to kind of talk about the project. There's one point three million dollars, I think, that is coming from the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency to support that project. He also has another project that he's wrapping up right now in Gaylord, Minnesota. When he started that project, he had a community conversation in Gaylord with the, with everybody that wanted to participate and attend. And, uh, very recently, he said to me that he really wants to kind of focus on doing something like that here in Grand Murray as well. And some more details to come on that. Um, we don't have a date or anything like that, but um, I know that that's, um, being, um, considered right now for, if not the end of this year, the beginning of next year. Um, as far as, um, other projects that we're working on, um, Mike and I had a preliminary conversation with a developer uh, on a site located here in the community, just, uh, pre-engineering kind of discussion about location and that sort of thing. That would be for, I believe, nine single-family houses. Um, 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 trying to think of any other ones that come to mind.
Um, back for DeVal, so he has requests though for additional monies besides his one-point-three million?
Um, no, uh, he's not looking for any additional money for, for the project. He's looking for, uh, some diversity of investment in that project. Um, uh, so that's where he's looking right now, yep. And he's, uh, he started looking at a sizable, uh, seven-figure number, and then he ended up, uh, uh, being able to find some money already, so he's working on that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, he's making headway.
Is there, there's been community conversation about One Roof coming back into the county? Is there anything that way?
Uh, it's just, interesting you bring that up. Uh, I do know that there has been some One Roof discussion with, um, with, uh, the city recently about, um, that, um, North, North Star and the west, northwest part of the community, where they have the Land Trust. Uh, they, uh, they had a presentation with me a couple of weeks ago, and gave me the news that they are also in, um, uh, the hunt for the IRR funding for that project as well. That was kind of a surprise to me at the time. Uh, but they're looking to provide another seven units of housing opportunity up there, so that would be an expansion of that. Um, and then preliminarily, we're having conversations about working with One Roof to do some of the bigger things like senior housing, and, um, One Roof has a property in Lutzen called Four Directions. They still own property behind that, and are also interested in expanding what they have there with more units. And we've got developable land there, so that's an opportunity for us to work together to in the county. And they bring their uniqueness now. They have over five hundred units of Land Trust housing that they either own or have sold and are in the market now, and I think that that's unique. And I think that that's unique. Um, I don't know that um, when I was in the legislature, Land Trust was kind of a big question in the air because. You own the la- you own the property on top of the land, but you don't own the land. In one respect, it sure does bring down the cost of housing because you don't buy the land, you're just buying what's on top of the land. Um, and uh, you look at what's going on in Duluth right now and they're providing some real big opportunities for people. Who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford a home that are now able to go afford a home and still live in a rental. And I think that those opportunities are starting to really take more consideration. I know from the lending side, they're, they work with lenders that are more keyed into that and are willing to work with. Folks who are willing to, you know, to buy, you know, buyers and sellers and um, I think that that's really starting to take off and. They're looking at doing some more of that here in Cook County, specifically in Grammeray.
So I was wondering uh, if you had any ideas of funding for infrastructure because that's certainly something we talked about today. We talked about a lot. Um, it's finding ways for us to be able to build out what we have and of course, there are limitations.
Yeah, um, well, my thoughts about that are that, you know, I think. When the legislator legislators were here last week and they heard a a number of different people talk about a number of different topics. One of the things that I wanted to bring to the table is just to keep that money flowing into the different places where money goes and so they can. Have opportunity to compete for those dollars, whether it be PFA, whether it be MPCA, they're always putting together packages for funding. To create resilience in communities and so you have a pipe that doesn't mean the the flow of water when we have these big storm events. They offer money to uh, to increase the size of the pipe. Um, and different opportunities like that. I I think that uh, small. Small cities development program at deed has funding for different things. Uh, Mike and I talked about perhaps using that to the best advantage of our water treatment request. For this year and maybe looking in the future for some other opportunities. You know, I think that there's just a lot of opportunities out there for the state and the feds to pass through dollars to the state. To provide incentives to uh, to create some, or not incentives, but to create more opportunities to expand some of these um, programs, sewer. Water, electricity, that sort of thing. And so, you know, I think it's gonna be one of those things where in tandem, you know, I think. There's a role to play with the HRA involved in this as well. Uh, not just in in Grammeray, but I I think that there's a lot of opportunity across the entire county. For the HRA to be part of the resource finding mission to provide more opportunities for that housing. You can't have a house without a place to flush and you definitely can't have a house without a place to drink the water. Those are needs, electricity as well and roads and um, those all cost money these days. And they're not making them last any longer than they last. In the process, maybe they looked at new techniques to make them last longer. But um, you know, they still cost money and that cost isn't going down either. It's only going up. And so, you know, if there's a role to play uh, through working with uh, planning and zoning or the PUC. Or different organizations in the county and the city, I'm happy to play that role as the HRA to help find that funding.
That's always hard for us, limited re- you know, we're in different than the other small town, limited resources, so when you try to understand those grants. Even though they exist, that's really hard to do and that's where I think having your organization should help us. Uh, um, you know, the emails fly, but who has time to read them or understand if they apply?
Right, right. The devil's in the details and there's a level that starts out with a pre-application. Then it goes to the application and so people get whittled out throughout the different phases of the process. All the way to the final. Sometimes you could be looking at a year before you know whether or not you've got the funding for the year and you've spent time to do it. I understand that that's, you know, that turns people off. Maybe that's part of the reason why they do it, but I think it's the end of the day. Um, it it, we have legitimately a great opportunity for competition value here in Cook County and in Grammeray. To say, look, you know, we can compete with some of these communities and we can get those dollars, so. That's a positive. Till we get two of us, of course, and then, then we go somewhere else.
Anyone else have any questions or asks about any of our projects or?
Thank you.
Okay, well, if you do, give me a call, give me a shout. Happy to have lunch with you, happy to have coffee with you. Um, you know, Cook County is, you know, eventually, uh, I I commute back and forth from St. Peter to Grammeray twice a week. Uh, Mondays and Fridays, but I I um, I can't wait to live here and there's a real benefit to living here. And that's when you're here, you get to be part of the community and you get that buy-in to the community. And I know I'm not the only one and there are a lot of people in the, in the, in the state who love to move to Grammeray. We just have to provide them those opportunities, so I'm glad to work together to get that.
Thank you. And speaking of small community grants, here we go.
You wanna come up, John?
Yeah, sure.
This is actually our, I've mentioned this before, our second crack at this idea. With our second engineering firm, but all credit to MSA for saying, hey, guys, do you wanna apply for this? Money and try to get some help. Doing some planning for your wastewater system, specifically GIS work. And we said, well, yes, we do. As a matter of fact, we would love to do that. So, thanks, John, and your folks at MSA for helping put this together tonight. The only action item is. Part of the application is we need a resolution that approves the application. We've included a kind of a draft of what we might do. It's incomplete. Uh, we'll be working on it with MSA in the next couple of weeks to to get it all done, but you can see the scope of work anyway. Uh, the type of things that that we would do. And just to give you that kind of idea of how much does it cost, this is, they're suggesting, well, maybe close to sixty thousand dollars to do. The um, GIS. Data collection and and analysis and get it all set up. It's not cheap. But we need it, so we're hopeful at this point. Do folks have any questions about? This would, that might help uh, get the resolution passed or?
And with that, would anyone like to make a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, second.
All right, any, one more time, any questions or thoughts about that? All right, and with that, I will take a vote on that. Everyone uh, in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. We're gonna get it this time, so we don't have to think about the next question, which is, what have we got?
Very good. Um, we, well, we tried this um, that one time. With Tracey, with that other group too.
Uh, we've tried to find assistance to build out our GIS multiple, multiple times. The last time was this same resiliency grant, but was through our electric. We were gonna build out the electric GIS first. And really, GIS is GIS. Once we're out there collecting data and we have a system that houses it. We just need that backbone and then, and I think everybody's kind of in the same place where they want to be able to use it.
It's very important. All right, thanks for coming. Sitting here for this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, do we need to all knock on one one more time? No, three, is this three? Three's good.
Three is a charm.
Yeah.
I might have lost count.
I don't know. All right, thank you. Our last topic tonight is the donation policy, which you were gone for, Ben. I mean, that would have been the second time we talked about it. We um, the, the four of us took this direction with it, but we wanted to look it over one more time with you here. See if you had any other thoughts and make sure um, you think we're on the right track or anything you wanted to tweak on that.
Yeah, I don't think that there's anything I would add.
Okay, um.
It's pared down quite a bit from two pages to one and you'll notice the word donation isn't in there anymore. I think that matches the conversation you had last time.
Yep.
Okay, is everyone else all ready for this from before? I just wanna make sure that Ben had a chance to make any thoughts or changes or edits or whatever.
I appreciate that.
All right, I think that takes care of it then. Unless I brush something through that. And with that, the main part of our topic items is complete. We'll go on to council and staff reports. Uh, Mike, I'll start with you tonight. We'll go this direction.
Mike near or Mike Michael?
Sorry, oh, yeah. You two can't sit together anymore.
Still confusing.
Well, I guess I'm Mike and you're Michael, is how we do that.
That's how we've been doing it.
That is how we do that. Okay, well, let's see. I will go first then. We uh, I was in, um, I wasn't in Rochester this morning attending the SIMPA meeting. This is our monthly meeting that we have, seventeen cities that are all members of Southern Minnesota Municipal Power Association. And we trade off which city the meeting's going to be held in. Thankfully, technology these days makes it much. Easier for us to participate without traveling to the meetings, which is good. Cause one of my goals for twenty twenty-five was to participate in more of these meetings and I think I attended eleven of them. Um, I don't think I went to more than one in person, though. So, that's, that, it's good. Uh, we, the topics that we cover are their budget. Uh, the rates that we're charging us, a lot of kind of in-depth analysis and what their, where the costs come from. Resource planning into the future, uh, regulatory issues that they have to deal with in terms of. Renewables, the biggest one. That, it's a well-run organization. We're lucky to be a part of them and uh, we, I think we just learn a lot from. How to operate a good organization, just watching them do it. So, I'm really feel fortunate to be a part of that and is continuing to be my goal next year to. Stay as close to that group as I can. Our electric utility is our biggest. Uh, entity that we have as a part of the organization. Uh, it is a service provider for not just the city, but also a few miles in either direction of the city and. It's really a crucial service that that we provide and and for a good price and, you know, reliable. It's a good thing. And I'll let Craig talk about the PUC meeting. I won't talk about that.
Any highlights then in particular from this meeting?
Well, from today, uh, there's, we went through a study that SIMPA participated in with. Kind of a nationwide group looking at battery storage. And SIMPA has been thinking about battery storage specifically in Grammeray as a concept. And so the study looks at a little bit of that Grammeray. They've applied for money to try and actually install. Battery storage in Grammeray unsuccessfully, but I think we're gonna take that report and see if they will be happy enough to. Deliver it directly to our utilities commission as well, so we could look at that battery storage concept. It's, it's interesting. It's, it's not um, the type of technology yet where an investor would purchase it. And hope to make money by charging it while the power is cheap and selling it while the power is expensive. Uh, but when you think about the uh, utility of having. That storage meet minor outages rather than using our plant, supplementing our plant. Or more importantly, just in the entire grid system, having battery storage help with renewables, which are. Not as reliable in terms of being on when you need them. Uh, it's coming. We know it's coming. And so it's kind of, I think it's more interesting for us in Grammeray than in some other cities because of our isolation, so. I wouldn't be surprised if we don't have a serious conversation in the next five years about it.
Yeah, it seems like, well, I've read about that in New England with area, geography like ours, that's where they had. Can't, they can't do it by landmark or bearing, whatever.
Yeah.
Batteries are s- are more efficient cost-wise. It wouldn't be in a flat farm field, but.
Yeah.
Right here, but it has lots of potential and batteries are getting better, so. Technology. Cool, what else you got?
I'm gonna let you talk about the legislative visit, so I'm I'm gonna just go ahead and defer.
All right. So we had a, a Y meeting, believe it or not, they've been rare. But we did, we had one, um, and they, as you guys know, we have that meeting because we give them money every year. And they just kinda gave us a little heads up about what they're, what they're doing, how things are going. Some of the great things to know is that the staffing is stable, so that was a big, I know. I mean, he said the word stable. What does that mean? I'm not sure, but uh, that, that was good. They've uh, started up an advisory council, which they've been needing to do for a long time and have and had. And so that's on its way. Um, the annual campaign is uh, going along. Um, the facilities, which is a lot of what the county thinks about. Um, they've got a new floor in there, which I'm sure some of you have seen that up in the cardio room. Um, I think it's letting us know, uh, that the programming is, you know, they're pretty good with their programming. The dance is full. Uh, gymnastics is full, the childcare um, is, is going along well and they had, what was it? There was a childcare parent-aware uh, four-star rating that they received recently, so that was also good news. Yeah, that was part of that Y update. Also, the library.
Any updates on the need for a new executive director?
Well, that was, that was earlier. This, this was before Alex was.
Oh, got it.
Yeah. Um, no, so that, but. Um, and then the library, we basically did, there wasn't a whole lot. We were talking about our coming calendar. Um, and also looking at our annual review of the library as a whole, like how are we doing? And we started that conversation last time and we're gonna continue that conversation next time. Um, and then you know about the new hire and yeah, that's about it. I have nothing.
We're cleaning this up next year. Ben?
I actually don't have anything. Well, I guess we could talk a little bit about uh. HR, um. There really isn't a lot to report from today's meeting, although we're just cleaning up a lot of little detail work. Um, going through job uh, descriptions and uh, which you guys will have an opportunity to look at some of those. Things in the next, probably next meeting.
Do them in batches, I think, we decided, right?
Yeah, so we'd be able to look at some of that stuff and see those changes and approve those. Um, and then we're working toward um, the overall goal of just the review process in general and uh. Mike made contact with the union reps, so we're gonna start the negotiation hopefully next couple of weeks. Uh, I'm sure everybody's anxious for that. Other than that, nothing. We got North House Board meeting next Thursday and uh, I wasn't able to make the last uh, planning commission meeting. That's it for me.
And tonight, we did the first step of the annual review process, cause we did calls. So it's officially kicked off.
It's kickoff.
Yeah, there we go. Hey, Craig? Uh-oh, you must have something.
No, I just, there's a lot of information with the PUC stuff, but um, anyway. One item on the agenda was the new contract with Zaff Energy. Um, we'll have that new uh. Charging, high-speed charging station installed. As soon as they can do it, I guess. Well, they have a deadline, actually, I don't.
I think by the end of the year it has to be done.
The year, yeah, so we're hoping that gets done by the end of the year and then we'll be online with a new charger. Um, the other line, the other item, the other item on the agenda was the twenty-six electric graph budget, so we went through the budget for twenty twenty-six. And uh. There's been some changes with SIMPA as far as uh. Their wholesale rates for twenty twenty-six. They actually reduced the rates ten percent for twenty twenty-six. Um, but they do have some different charges, the way they charge us for transmission expenses, expenses. We have to allow for those. Um, items. So I guess um, we didn't finish the meeting with setting rates. Uh, as of uh, our meeting, we're having another meeting next month. We have to have a meeting to set the rates for next month. But ultimately, I think we're. For the twenty twenty-six budget. for the twenty twenty-six budget, we uh have an increase of about fifty-eight thousand. So um, we're gonna circle back on what rates we may or may not need to do. Uh, tentatively, we set a two percent increase, but we don't know if that's actually what we're gonna be doing or not. Cause we're gonna have to have a meeting and discuss that through me, could be. What factors will contribute to that is where we're tracking, um, projecting our sales of electricity. So we're projec- we are projecting, expect to uh increase sales for twenty twenty-six. We're tracking currently this level of twenty twenty-four sales for twenty twenty-five. So I guess that's kind of in a nutshell. The electrical part of it, we'll also be talking about the sewer water at our next meeting. We didn't cover that at the last, this month's meeting. Anything else you wanna add to that?
One of the big factors in their budgets that affect the levy is how much are we going to be using utility funds to pay for this building? Because of course, the city hall side is more than half used just to operate the utilities, probably more like seventy percent really. So that's the math that we're trying to figure out, what's the fair allocation of that? And then also what can those budgets afford? When it comes to the electric budget, of course, they can afford quite a bit more than I think we could make a case for being a fair allocation. So Kim and I are working on that. I'm more on the afford side, she's more on the fair allocation side. Which is uh appropriate for our roles, I think. So, yeah, more to come.
Okay. Um, we also had a park board meeting. Items on the park board meeting, the um soil and water conservation district relief grant program support. There's um money available. We're gonna clean up the the brush and the dead trees uh on that Sweetheart Bluff area. And the land trust has been notified about that work that we're gonna do down there. So there's money available to clean that up, which would be kinda nice. Basically, kinda firewise it, cut down the dead underbrush stuff and get rid of that stuff. That's not it, that's in there, that looks bad. Another item that I just talked to Dave about actually that wasn't on in the the meeting, but uh we're talking about the bath house. Building out the new bath house and there's been some costs that have been put together through LHB. And different, a couple of different routes. We could go on the building of the bath house, either a pre-cast cement type building, um, which would bring us in a lower estimated cost rather than um custom building it. But we also have met with another develop, actually Goff, I think, had talked to us about it, which thinks that they can get us in to a better price range with a custom building rather than a pre-cast type situation. The thing is there is coming in with a, it's a huge expense to build that bath house. And we don't want, we wanna be able to be more competitive, I guess, in that ask to help finance that, build that. So it was interesting to see that possibly stick building it, or not stick building it, but custom building it can still get us in like perhaps three hundred thousand, somewhere in that figure, under the pre-cast, which is supposed to be the more um conservative number, the one point five million. So it'd be interesting to see how this works out. Hopefully, we can custom build it so it looks um, you know, the way we want it to look since we're it's part of our park build-out and it'd be nice to have this building be like a shining star type thing of what our park can look like with our new bath house. Replace, we have other ones we need to replace too, but this would be the first one that we need to do right away on that list.
And you said McGoff or a different?
Goff.
Yeah, McGoff was.
They did this.
We're asking them about it.
Okay.
We're asking them.
Not the original cost estimates, but the second look at it.
I just wasn't sure if I heard the McGoff or just anyways, it is the same.
Rate cha- yeah, we did do, we didn't finish, we're we're having another meeting to finish our rate changes for next year. But we did do a three percent increase on the nightly across the board on the seasonal and the nightly. Um, so that's in our computer program, so it's being used right now. Um, the other changes we have to do that we haven't finished yet are certain um things that don't impact the reservation system. So we're gonna discuss that at the next meeting to finalize those for the twenty twenty-six season.
Last uh Thursday, Mike and I went to the legislative legislative luncheon held out at um Charlie's Alpine Bistro. I don't know if I have a name right.
Sounds right.
Only been there multiple times now. So we had our appointed twenty minutes for which I brought the stopwatch. Um, and sped through that one. I had five minutes slush in there too. And we not only, I mean, they've heard about it's, it's Roger Scraba and Grant Haathchild. So they have heard what we need on wastewater. But what I attempted to do last spring and got cut short on is what I added in for this was all the various lake-related projects we are working on from the ship oh-one to the erosion on this side of the harbor and the erosion on the, over on East Bay and the 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 master park plan and all that we need to do over time. And I was setting the stage, I told them for things, letting them know about things that were coming, things that are kind of in the works. And a lot of this relates back to the Coast Guard and when it comes back and that that's a huge project and all of, all of that. They um also mentioned they have their own little appropriations pieces, so it's good to talk to them cause they could maybe help us with some of these things, like parts of the park projects or different things we're doing with more direct appropriations. So I mean, it's not my wheelhouse of expertise to know where I always to go and sniff for money. So every time we have these conversations, I kinda learn a little bit more like, oh, really? Tell me more about that one.
Yeah.
Um, but I, that, a lot of it was, for me, was setting the stage to to let them know what our major themes have been, which for me anyways, is the harbor and the lake and all these projects that are leading to bigger projects. So they're not cut unawares or if the conversation strikes, they can talk about it a little bit. And then as we get more into detail about action steps, like needing money for community visioning or whatever, that they'll be familiar with what it was, what did I miss?
There were a lot of other community partners that are reporting on their needs as well.
That's true.
It's amazing the stamina those gentlemen have to sit at that table and listen to those asks. And that's just one small community, they've got dozens of them. So I really appreciate that, they're willing to do that work.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's nice, so. Yeah, they sat still and we just kept cycling through through the table, everyone, so. And just a little comment, yesterday I went to the veterans program up at the school, which is something they, I don't know when they ever started doing that, but they did such a nice job and those kids, really, they participated. The high school kids played with the um, no, the band, the the band of in town locally, not kids. Swing band, thank you. Swing band members were playing with the kids and then the younger kids were singing all the songs and and doing some reciting and anyways, very well-done program and it's, it's just very nice. Keep it in mind for next year. After that, we're just busy on EDA. We'll be posting the EDA director position starting December fifth, finalizing all the steps for that. And the nursery management board, we're finishing up our edits for um chapter changes for the plan, which I'm back to planning and zoning and land use. We need to make sure that we have refreshed and looked at how those recommendations influence our zoning along the lake too. I don't know if we've done any series on that, but we need to.
Okay.
End that through, so. That's it?
That's it.
Like that's not enough. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.